Okay, at 7:01, I would like to go ahead and call this regular meeting of the East Line Planning Commission to order for Tuesday, July 12th. First, I'd like to do a roll call, so if we can start at this end of the table and everyone[16.32][16.32]introduce themselves, please.
Nicole Davidson.
Richard Gordon.
Kurt Scott.
Michelle Williams.
Tom Fitte.
Jason Diebel.
Thank you all. We're going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you very much. Any additions to the agenda for today? Okay. Okay, so we now have our public delegations. I don't believe we have any members of the public here to give us their public delegations. Okay, we're good. Moving on to reports. Do we have any communications?
No communications.
Okay. Did we have anyone attend the most recent zoning meeting?
I did. It was on July 7th. There was a public hearing for special permit for a dance studio indoor recreation area for 11 Freedom Way Unit D-12 for Nicole Nadeau. It was approved. And that was it, other than the coyotes. They want to put up signs informing visitors about the coyotes, and zoning can do it because they're informational as long as they're a certain size. That was it.
That is a great segue to our ex officio update. Mr. Weber.
We spent a lot of time talking about the coyotes, and I think everybody's probably seen on the town website, on the 28th, there'll be a public hearing where people come in and explain pros and cons of different things that you can't do with wild animals. A lot of frustration, not a lot of answers. We approved the special appropriation for the Route 1621 corridor study, which I think you all will like to care about. Light one point. Put some boards. Talked about putting pickleball courts up again. And we approved study money. Where's it at? Pathway project to do an assessment of that property. And I think that's probably it.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Weber? Okay. Mr. Geisell.
I do have a report we just wanted to bring up to speed on, one of the grants that we've applied for, as well as the Route 1621 corridor study. I don't know if you want to take that, move that to the end of the meeting after the public hearing?
That probably makes sense.
Yeah, it's not long, but it's being a mere public hearing.
Yep. Sounds good to me.
So do you need a motion to move that to the end of the agenda? Sue, do you want a motion to move that to the end of the agenda?
I don't think so. I think we're going to move that.
Okay.
That's just a later.
Great. For our subcommittee updates, we do not have an update from the P O C D subcommittee, although we are probably due to meet next month, so I will update you then. But I know Affordable Housing has some updates.
We met last night. It was for the kickoff meeting. We had a presentation from our contractor. There was a lot of really good background information. If anyone cares to see any of that, I would say email Gary. And I think you have the slides from that, right? Or you're going to get the slides?
Yes, I just proceeded as I was going to get them up to the commission before I got the officer, all of that information with this commission as well. We'll look at it and get that up online so that everyone can.
So, and it's moving along. We have another meeting for the, I don't have the date right in front of me, but we scheduled our next meeting, and it's moving along nicely.
Excellent.
August 15th.
All right. Great. Yeah, that was very informative. I would 10 out of 10 recommend going through the materials when Gary sends them out because there was a ton of data in there that I thought was really valuable. No updates from me today, so let's move on to approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve our regular meeting minutes from June 14th, 2022? Thank you. Anyone want a second?
Second.
Thanks, Nicole. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Kirk. Moving into our public hearing. This is for the application of Kristen T. Clark, P E of Nyonic Real Estate LLC owner, an application for a two-lot re-subdivision of approximately 5.13 acres of land zoned RU-40, located at 9 Upper Kensington Drive, East Lime Assessors map, 40.0, Lot 17, with a waiver request from Section 23.5B.1 of the Town of East Lime zoning regulations and Section 6-8-7 of the stormwater management requirements, Section 5.2.2G erosion and sedimentation control requirements, and Section 5-2-2B and C preliminary resource impact and conservation plan. Date of receipt of this application was May 10th, and we opened the public hearing at the last meeting on June 24th. So we are continuing that now, and I believe we're going to hear first from Attorney Garrity, or Mr. Geisell, do you want to walk us through the new?
Yeah, I was just going to enter for the record that the additional items that came in. Exhibit W, which was a report from Lightline Park District, dated July 11, 2022, from Wendy Brown, R. S. Exhibit X, the drainage evaluation by May Engineering LLC, dated May, from E., dated July 11, 2022. Exhibit Y, the drainage area runoff flow pathing plan by May Engineering. Exhibit Z, email correspondence from Alice Close, Town engineer, herself regarding the order to do a little bit of a search.
Excellent, thank you. Everybody got that?
Yes.
Sue, good?
Yeah, the email there from Alice to you, Z.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, Attorney Garrity.
Thank you. Again, members of the commission, Paul Garrity on behalf of English Harbor Asset Management, the applicant and developer. Initially, what I'd like to do is address the new exhibits. When we were here the last time, we did not have a review completed by LedgeLite that has been since completed, and LedgeLite has approved all three lots for septic on that. One of the concerns that Mr. Close had previously was the drainage for the site. Mr. May did the calculations on that, and I believe Mr. Close's email says that, in response to this, he said, "There's no need for extra time. I just wanted to make sure that the drainage was well thought out." Mr. May believes in his opinion, which he does, that the increase is insignificant, then he is good with that. What I would like to do too, just so the commission's aware, in terms of this, if I can make this an exhibit. Exhibit A A is the G I S of the existing infrastructure there. So if we're looking at the two lots or the land that's involved here, the existing drainage infrastructure has been in place since the original approval of the subdivision a number of years ago. All the lots will drain into the existing drainage plumbing and pipes. This lots, this area will go back out into the open space area. The lot on this side will drain down to the existing drainage, which goes into the Darrell Pond area that the county, we now owns. The additional lot that we are seeking approval for drains to the rear. Make sure I got it in the right direction. So that, this lot will drain back to the east into the open space area, and we have an easement with the land trust as part of the conveyance to the land trust of the additional open space to allow for drainage and maintenance of that drainage if necessary, although it's essentially surface drainage. In addition, the design professionals incorporated rain gardens on the lots in order to trap more of the rain on, or runoff on the lots themselves and let percolate down. So it was Mr. May's conclusion at that point that the impact is insignificant on the property by addition of the extra lot on there.
So that's 27-1 that will go to the open space, or revised Lot 27?
I understand it's 1. There's a lot on it. It's Lot 27.
Okay, revised 27. Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, that drainage, you can, you can add.
In addition, I think they were submitted at the last hearing. My, actually, let me just check the date on that. On June 26th, my client responded to Mr. Geisell's comments in terms of the design plan on there, and I believe we addressed all of his comments with respect to the changes that were made in order to re-subdivision. I'm not aware that there were any further comments with regard to that. If we're, and if I can add this into the exhibit here. These are photos that Mr. Geisell's adding now that were taken a while back. And essentially what they show is the existing topography and the cut. So there's really no change by virtue of adding the additional lot as to the manner in which the lots will be developed. We have a single driveway that's going to be paved. That was one of the comments that Mr. Geisell had in requesting, or maybe Mr. Close, I'm not sure, I don't recall at this point. But to pave those lots, so that that will be done. That's noted on the plans at this point, but we're not changing any, or making any significant changes to the properties as a result of that. I also have the resource G I S maps, and they will show that there's no significant natural resources in this area. And again, all that was submitted back when the original subdivision application went in, but I'll make it part of the record for this particular application on there. One thing I would like to correct, in the original April 20th design report, my client referred to Lot 27, also known as Lot 11. It's actually Lot 9. So if we're looking at that, if you look at the April 20th report, it should say Nottingham Hills Lot 27, AKA Lot 9, not Lot 11 as it does in the report. Pick that up over time. The biological report that I just submitted indicates that there's no endangered state or federal species listed or any critical habitat that's going to be affected by this. The open space, I think as I indicated at the last meeting, we've already donated and recorded that deep into the East Lime. That open space, the additional open space is shown as the area up here. That was donated, I think, a few months ago, I recall, when it was reported to the land Sue, we've covered, in terms of the waivers, we are asking for settlement and erosion control. It's technically listed as an exemption in there. All the paragraph refers to it as a waiver, but we think based on the drainage report and the mapping and the materials that are shown on the subdivision plan, that we have adequately addressed sanitation and erosion control measures on that, and that having a separate individual report with respect to that really isn't necessary in light of the fact that the plans contain most of that information on them. The other issue, this is a C D D application, but when you're reviewing the plans and all of it, it's a little confusing. We did submit as part of this a plan for a conventional subdivision. We're asking for a waiver of the 40-foot buffer largely because this is sitting in an existing subdivision, and we are, my client's the butter on both sides of this, but we have adequately designed this when we did it as conventional, and then designed the C D D using the same location and layout of that. So that if the commission were to look at this and say, "Well, we want you to do the 40-foot buffer," you would only need to approve the conventional plan because the only thing we would be doing here is changing the frontage on the two lots. We would change the frontage on Lot 27-1 and 27-2 to make those have more frontage on the street and more increase the buffer, but nothing would change in terms of the layout of the house and all that. They already meet those requirements. But because, again, because it's an existing subdivision, we designed it under C D D on that. But as I said, again, the page four is the conventional layout, and that, we demonstrate based on that that we can meet the conventional design, what we are, we're proposing the conservation design, which gives us the ability to make the all lots more equal in terms of the frontage on the street. And the stormwater management, I think we addressed in Mr. May's report, which was submitted. So I don't know if there's any other questions that the commission has at this point in time, or if Mr. Geisell has any comments on this.
In regards to further comment, I don't have any additional comments that may address my concerns in terms of the driveway, as well as the stormwater management, so that we're not expecting passing any of those issues. I think we received all the information that we need, and the application is complete, is my opinion, up to your discretion. I have questions. At last meeting, we brought up the issue of the application, my discussions with Attorney Garrity, that we review this application on its merits and go from there.
Great. Okay, I think there's probably a few questions. Jason, I heard you speak up, so why don't you go ahead and go first?
The storm lot outlined in blue on the document we got today indicates that it cuts into the wetlands. Does that have to go before inland? Or is that just something?
That's indicating that the drainage is in that direction, meaning that there aren't no wetlands on the site itself. They don't have to, I think, make application to the wetland agency. If there's an adverse inland impact as a result of this, then they would probably have to get an inland permit. As the house is within the 300-foot open area, they'll have to get an inland permit for the construction of that house. But legally, because there's no inland wetlands or watercourses on the property that's being subdivided itself, they do not have to apply to the wetland agency for a review.
Thank you.
Tom, did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Come on, I figured it out.
Okay. Anybody on this side of the table, questions?
I actually.
Go for it.
Go ahead, Rich, did you have one?
No.
Oh, no. So, so we're calling off a couple of waivers from zoning. Did they, we have memos from that, I'm sorry if you mentioned them, but is there memos stating that the waivers that were requested were in fact drainage, because they're not under our purview, the waivers that we're talking about? Is that true?
Well, we've, we've, in parts of those waivers buffers, those fall under the planning commission's purview because you're reviewing the subdivision application, although it is in the zoning regulation. I agree that it would not make a whole lot of sense that planning commission could waive those in that context, because zoning regulations are separate from planning subdivision. That said, the past applications we have in the treaty of the waiver being.
And if I could, Mr. Scott, if I could just direct it to, the regulations make you request those as part of the subdivision approval too, so not, not from the zoning department or zoning commission?
The intent is that the zoning regulations are not somewhat like enabling legislation. It's not. That's the intent, but they're connected, giving the planning commission the authority to make this. Exhibit F was the zoning review of Mobile Hall. It contains the side guard department, side guard department of 50B along C D D development perimeter. We're also indicating that there's a buffer required. C D D application must meet Section 23.41 purpose, the zoning regulations in Section 23.2, application is explained.
During hearing.
During hearing, yeah, the application complies with all of Section 23.
Okay, so, so, so to further along the waiver request topic, there are some requirements for granting waivers, right? Or things, criteria that have to be met in order to meet the ability to waive these? So, so we'll probably want to go through that.
Yes, Section 4-12, the regulations, the basic criteria of granting waivers. Obviously, the first criteria is the waiver request is ready, it has, the property is never sought, it's subject to the business of the property, and that generally the business of the land in the area. Physical features of property are located on the structural difficulties in the home area, the harsh it, the needed permits in the regulations. Granting a waiver will not have a significant adverse type to part of adjacent property in the environment of public safety. Granting other waivers will not be incorporated by the construction of the building, the proposed, the very end engineering standards, intending to regulations to report the town engineer has requested and considered by the commission. Requested waivers, the minimum deviation from the requirement of the regulations is necessary to make the subdivision subject clear. Granting a waiver, the commission shall state upon its record the reason of the type of waiver. That said, as you heard Attorney Garrity indicate, that the conventional subdivision layout would otherwise meet the regulations, with the frontage requirement.
Well, the conventional meets the frontage requirement. There's, so there's enough area there for every lot to meet the frontage requirement on there. But we chose to do the C D D because one of the reasons is it allows us to move one of the houses back a little bit further, even though we can do that under the conventional, but equalize sort of the frontage that everybody has, so that there isn't a gap where somebody has 150 feet, and then somebody else has a 20-foot driveway that accesses the street. So, and by doing that, we tend to maintain the sort of aesthetics of the neighborhood because most of the lots are of similar size in there. I think some of the earlier ones on, I forget what the street at the cul-de-sac is, tend to be bigger because they go back on the cul-de-sac into the open space, but here these lots are all ranged between just over an acre to just under two. So in terms of adverse impact on the, on the lots, similar to 21 and 23 that we re-subdivided about a year ago, there really isn't going to be any adverse impact on the existing houses in the subdivision.
Okay, so that was for, for the, okay. That was for the first one, 23.5B. So, so you feel, you feel that you've gone through all the, all of the requirements?
Yes.
Satisfactorily?
Right.
Okay. So that's for 23.5B1. How about the erosion and sedimentation, sedimentation control requirements? That waiver, that waiver meets the same standard. It, you can, you can go through and explain how we're, how we're addressing those requirements for criteria of, of the waiver for that, for the erosion and sedimentation control?
I know we have, looking at the zoning record, but we do have an erosion and sedimentation control plan as part of the plans that have been submitted tonight and with Mr. May's report. Believe that we can satisfy the criteria for a waiver of a full drainage report, which would essentially address that part of the regulations. Because as I indicated, Mr. May's report says that there would be insignificant impact from the drainage design on the property.
And then the last, the last 522B and C. Where can we look?
I'm sorry.
I said for, for Section 522, preliminary resource impact and conservation plan.
So that.
Right. Where are we talking about that waiver?
So in the initial, just move the papers here.
Has that one, that one's been filed and, the application for that waiver's been filed also?
There, there was one done for the original zoning, or excuse me, subdivision application back in, I think when it was approved in 2006. There's a, in the April 22nd design plan that was submitted with the application, there is a copy of the biodiversity information included in that, and then I provided tonight, I think it was Exhibit A or B, in addition, C, the additional report. So we're asking the commission to, in light of the fact that we have submitted that information and it was previously approved to waive having a full biodiversity report prepared.
So this was previously waived on the larger subdivision? Is that what?
Required.
It was required on the larger subdivision, so we didn't.
And you did it for that larger subdivision?
Right.
All right.
Good? Okay. I was just hoping actually that you could walk us through the site plan just a bit more. I know typically when we start a public hearing, we kind of go over that in a bit more detail, but as you know, we got off to a weird start. So I'm seeing on the May engineering report that we're talking about lots 26, 27, and 28, and on the map, I'm looking at Lot 27 and then the existing 5 Upper Kensington Drive. So I could, if you could just walk us through on the map, what was approved and what is changing? Because I think, I can see what you'd like, but I don't know what, I can't tell quite where the existing lot lines were.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, that, with the lot line revisions.
Okay, I'm on Exhibit B, so that's probably not the right, and I think I'm on what you have.
No, I think you're on, you probably are on the right one. They were submitted as part of the design report, but they were submitted in Exhibit B, regular sized paper, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm on Exhibit B.
Exhibit B is shown. There's a lot line revision. This is G G. That's the, that's not showing. No, this is, this is it. So what we did earlier. Probably guess one, we worked from... Previously, lot 27 consisted of the land over here and then there was lot 26 over here and then lot 25. We took a piece of land from lot 26 and a piece of land from lot 28, including this back area, and combined it to make one large parcel.
Okay.
We then...
That was previous?
That, right, that was the lot line revision.
Okay.
Then, that combination allowed us to look, go back and look at lot 27 and say, we have the ability then to divide that into three lots instead of just one.
Got it.
As part of lot 26, which there was a piece to the rear of that, that frankly went back and forth with the builder on whether he wanted it or didn't want it. Didn't want it, and we ended up carving that off as part of the lot line. And we were gonna convey to him, when he decided he wanted it again, that back to him. And then we said, you know what, we're done conveying it to these land trusts. So he added that and then he took the land from this area, that the excess land over here, and made the area in the back to the land trust. So originally, the parcel went back to this line here and we conveyed everything over there and over here, this piece here, to the land trust.
Right, okay.
Added to their parcel.
And it looks like there's some changes on the lot that Five Upper Kensington is currently on, but is, am I reading that incorrectly?
I have the five up, so Five Upper Kensington originally went straight back.
Okay.
All the way to the land trust existing property.
Yep.
That lot got smaller.
Okay.
And then we, as I said, we took that and utilized that for lot 27.2 or portion of that, and conveyed a portion of lot 5, and this is where it gets confusing because we're using subdivision numbers, you're using tax.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what it says on the map.
Right, so lot 27, excuse me, lot 5 went straight to the back and then included this piece over here.
Okay.
That piece went to the land trust, asked for the land behind it.
Yep.
And we made lot 5 small.
Okay, okay. Great. And the trail that's indicated on this, that's maintained by the neighborhood or?
Yeah, that is maintained by the land trust, I believe. And there is an easement with respect to that for them, for land trust to do that, and that is intended to remain on the ground.
So the trail will cut through these new front yards?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
One more question about the trail. So the trail, the easement is usually described in the deeds for the, is it recorded on the deeds for these?
The easement for the trail is recorded, in fact, right?
On all the properties that will be recorded for?
Yeah, we'd have to sell it subject to.
Okay.
And so the warranty deeds out from my client to anybody, whether it's a developer or individual buyers, we have language in there saying it's subject to the following. Because it's also going to be subject to the common driveway as well.
So we'll make it, do we need to make a note to look for that?
Probably should just note it in the approval and motion.
I guess my question, does the trail actually connect to any public access? Because it looks like it ends on one of the getting to.
It forks off.
My understanding is it goes, it actually goes out to the roads. Because it, one of the things that we retained as part of this was the right in the event the town said, look, we need, we've got an emergency meeting to get in. That can become a second point of ingress to the properties. And that's in the easement deed with the land trust.
Right, so if you want it, this is somewhat of a tangent and rabbit hole, but just to confirm. If you wanted to hike this trail, you'd park on Upper Kensington, walk right in through these new approved lots behind lot 5 and into the open space?
Correct, and it'll take you all the way down to Darrow Pond, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, because I know there were two, you butters, I think, to these two lots on point to the upper grade, or here. We were talking to them after the last hearing, and that's one of the things that they were asking about is it takes you, it can take you all the way down to Darrow Pond property. And then if you look right here, that's the access to the open space on the other side of the street.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
So the trail is going to go like, sorry, the trail's going to go almost like directly in front of the proposed houses? Is that?
That, correct. It's going to remain where it is. It's actually a fairly large, thought I had a picture of it here. Let me see if I can find it. But it's fairly well defined. This is a photo of it. I'm not sure, I don't represent as one, I'm stating, but that's what it looks like.
Huh.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Attorney Garrity?
No.
Okay. Good. Any other final comments?
I have nothing else. Just the only question is, would the commission vote on this tonight? Or is there the possibility that there's further information that might be needed that we want to keep the hearing open so that if there's any additional requests that we'd be able to respond to that?
I'm not sure that I would recommend us voting on it tonight, given the amount of new exhibits that came in today and just now. I'd like to give the commission time to review those. But I would be open to thoughts about whether or not to close the public hearing.
I mean, I have no problem continuing the public hearing, particularly if there might be questions that the commission has. Because I can bring Mr. May next time. He's on the RTM, I think, in town council in Monville and so forth, so he couldn't be here tonight. But if the commission's going to review this and there may be questions raised, my preference would be to keep the hearing open so that I can get the design professional here to answer any of those questions. And then if there's other questions relative to things that maybe are in my bailiwick, I'll be able to handle those.
Regarding the store water and engineering, I'm confident that our town engineer views this as, to enhance the information. Alex has concurred with it, so I'm comfortable with that. They've indicated the driveway will be paved, survey through lots, great. I would note that it just, it does cut through Five Upper Kensington. Our regulations do have some provisions about surveying more than three lots. But again, there's a lot of projects there on Five Upper Kensington, so they can put in their own private driveway. Could they come off of this existing one? Cut it already there, it makes sense. So I think I would anticipate saying this is a, is a, is a, whoa, existing one.
Yeah.
So with that driveway, if it's there, I would just note that it's likely that that's going to be a fourth lot to be served by that.
I would concur that we probably don't, won't have any questions for Mr. May. So that would be okay. Just, I think if anyone anticipates that we would have further questions or clarification needed from Attorney Garrity, then we should keep the public hearing open. If you feel like we have everything we need to make a decision and just need to review it, then we can close the public hearing.
I guess the, for the trail, I guess that exhibit there, is that going to be listed?
It should come.
Is that part of? If not, yes. As was the big penalty, and then I had it subject, conveyed, so it's subject to all use. Probably to access the very areas. Management construction, it's not going to be. I mean, I think the trail, I find it interesting, so. To cut across both two homes behind each other. A little awkward of sorts, but I think, you know, maybe the 27-1, it's going to be really trying to close to that landscape. At the same time, I don't think it's going to seem much use. What's the housing?
Depends on who moves it.
And I don't know that anyone would use that portion of the trail. Activity is focused on Darrow Pond itself.
Yeah.
Clearly, the intent, though, is for someone to use it, otherwise it would not exist.
I can, I don't believe I have a copy of it, right? I mean, if we want to keep the hearing open until, for one month, I have no issue with that.
Yeah.
And then that way, if there are any questions regarding that, and I'll submit it to Gary this week so that it's in the record and everybody can review it well in advance of the hearing.
That's probably good to have in the record, just as backup to this site plan, regardless of any of our questions.
Right.
I would think.
I, I mean, with that, to mind, I will have to request a grant of extension because we're only, uh, thirty days.
Right.
Prior to that next meeting, I think, if I have the time, I can, uh, lotion, ready for discussion.
Yeah, I would say we'd be ready to vote next meeting.
Okay. All right, so I will get you a letter, if not, an email tonight, a letter first thing in the morning saying we consented to an extension.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So we will take a motion to, to extend the public hearing. Continue the public hearing to our next regular meeting, which is on, what's the date? August something. Yeah, Nicole, you are totally correct, August 9th.
Mr. Gary, well, just give me a writing, that'd be great. You won't pay to read my handwriting, but sorry. I won't challenge.
Yes.
I am, I'll make a motion. I move to continue the public hearing to August 9th at the request of the applicant.
And the commission? Correct, no, it's not the request.
And acknowledging, acknowledging that there is a pending request because he, we need, we need a, we need a piece of paper from him in order to make it valid, right? So I'm just referencing the fact that we had a verbal from him that said he wants to keep the meeting open. That's all. I just wanted to note that it was.
I'll go ahead and second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, let the record show that we have unanimously approved to continue the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Garrity, for being agreeable about that. And we will pick this up on August 9th. Okay, so we do not have zoning, oh, please.
I'll have that ready, I will not be present.
Okay.
I will not be present either.
Well, we've got our alternates who have been present throughout, so that is good. Awesome, thank you. 'Tis the season for vacation. Okay, we, moving on to zoning referrals. There are none today, but we do have a municipal referral. This is a request from the Town of Eastline for the construction of an emergency access road from Romagna Road to Stonewood Drive to address the issue of inaccessibility during events such as flooding, downed utility pole, tree, et cetera. I think we have all witnessed, if we've lived here long enough, those cases happening there in the Bush Hill area. So Gary, why don't we?
I'm not sure if you can actually turn that on. So I'm going to share my screen.
Oh, you can.
Is it out?
Yeah, that would break.
Oh, God. So I switched the camera to.
How about output controls?
No, I think it's this.
No, no, no. Can you?
Projector, got it, got it on. They don't pay me extra for this, guys. It stopped blinking on our end. Are you plugged in? Should I click this laptop?
Oh, I know where this is. I know exactly where this is.
Okay. Do you want me to turn this off?
Uh, so, uh, sure, I'm used to value with the, uh, Wood Hill Neighborhood, but here it says you can close the door. The climate is poor and the flooding. You've got no way down to the neighborhood intersection. So we have to labor this, we're looking to build emergency access between Stonewood, Ripley Drive, and Romagna Road. Plan does require a bit of rating and side slopes, on the side slope. Essentially, it's just emergency access because there is no way in and out of there.
Will this be an open throughway under normal conditions? Or will it be gated and opened only in emergencies?
It will be gated, just similar to the emergency access, on the giant neck road and, uh, neck. That's here, just to progress, address for purposes, we'll gate it. And then you see some pedestrian use. Again, get a little more regular. I don't know, you're just going to walk out onto Foxbury and then 2161. Funny, but sorry, you just go walking.
Yep. Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Just for emergency vehicles and residents of the other neighborhood?
Correct, so during Hurricane Sandy, we were able to get in and out of that neighborhood. So, you know, with the second thing, we need to address, improve public safety.
And I'll just remind the commission that our charge here is to determine whether or not this is consistent with the plan of conservation. is to determine whether or not this is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, which, as we know, focuses very strongly on resiliency. And I, I would submit that this, this improves resiliency for that neighborhood specifically, because there have been a number of times that that bridge has been unpassable.
I have a comment.
Please.
I think we actually did call that road specifically out. And I'm looking through the, I'm looking through the book, I'm trying to find it, but I thought we did, we did note that in the P O C D that that neighborhood, so given that, given that it's probably called.
That's in the StanTech report.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we might have referenced that, so.
So in, in regards to getting consistent with the plan.
It's actually in the plan.
It was actually planned, to be honest.
I think, but I'm, I'm having a hard time finding it just this minute.
I think you're right.
It's, it's in there, I just don't know where. Yeah, it could be in the transportation.
I have it here, I have it here. So we, we appended the P O C D with the StanTech study, which says Bush Hill Drive, a single low bridge over Patagansett River provides the sole access to the Bush Hill neighborhood, effectively a cul-de-sac with about 130 houses. Higher river levels already flood the bridge. East Lyme should consider altering the bridge to protect access during the storm, during storms. Alternatively, the town could create a new access point to the neighborhood from nearby Upland Streets such as Whiting Farm Lane or Romagna Road. So, that's pretty good.
I, seeing that it is consistent with the P O C D, perhaps we should make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I was, yep, going to call for a motion as soon as we completed discussion, but it sounds like you have made one, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the, we approve the application as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So I think technically we are not approving. We are voting that it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. Do you want to just amend briefly to?
I'd like to amend. I'd like to make a motion that we find this consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, motion passes. Consistent with the plan. Okay. Old business. Gary, I see we have some items on subdivision regulation revisions here.
Yes, so I just kind of do this one, you know, and we, we, we are working on this. So there's an outline of notes, basically our goals, updating the revisions, subdivision regulations, sorry. I also provided you some handouts about, you know, why you may want to care about subdivisions, that we just don't know. So, you can have a read at your leisure, take a look at that. In terms of the goals, we just want to, since we make the regulations less cumbersome, easier for applicants to interpret, as well as staff. More concrete, remove, reword, subjective areas, scan definitions, and improve the layout of the document and the structure so it's easier to interpret, and to help. We also want to get more explicit on the application requirements, in particular, things such as key, being dependent on other agencies for their approval prior to making a decision. Something that we should call out of our regulations, with guidance on that from our association and the sheriff. Well, private streets and roadways, these things that I want to take a look at, no one's really tied to them. So I don't know that I'm actually doing anything unless it's something that we can do. But as that indicated, the commission, it's been ten years since we adopted some P regs, so I thought I'd take a look and see how we're doing, where we're at, and where we're going. So here's just the outline of some of the items that I thought would be more, take a look at. Moving on, can I also have that, check it?
Oh, yeah.
For item?
Please. Well, any questions about the subdivision regulation revisions for Gary?
That's all I have, some of the next. The, as far as projects, we have the Zecal Transportation Act for the 26th quarter study that is going forward. I think I did report, our first public outreach will be in roughly October as well. We also have a public outreach for the housing plan, which will be about the same time, I guess, on September, coming up, I think, a little busy. We also made an application to a program called Lot SIP, not to be confused with LoCIP. So Lot SIP is a transportation grant from the COG. They selected our project for sidewalks on East Patagansett going all the way from Route 156 up to 161. We're now eligible to apply for actual funding, but we have to do design work. We've got to get that done before the end of September. So, staff is kind of juggling things in terms of public works because they have a lot of design work, make some changes to our narrative. There's COG, has enlisted Titan Bond as a vendor to assist them in managing these applications. And seeing the projects through, assisting the towns, so it's great. Talking with them, it sounded very promising, that we could get a few shots at getting funds. The only problems they have is they thought our budget was low. And we were, you know, trying to make it appealing, they were like, just the cost of materials is going to do it, because of the cost of stuff. So, we just got back on the bottom of numbers. I think that's a project that we can call forward and maybe show a little bit around in that twenty four. And then I also found in my search for this information, and I was unaware that a feasibility study was never conducted by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, I wasn't sure it was completed. It was completed in July of 2021 for a shoreline east stop, station stop in New York. So it's available online, we haven't shared the link with you, you can take a look at it. I knew there was a study done, there had been interest several years ago, I mean, the former first selectman called Hanika, I know he asked me to pursue, you know, what possible stop, and what would be involved with that, but it didn't really go anywhere. I knew DOT took up the ball, but I didn't realize they finished the study. So it's here for reading, I'll have to take a look at it, conclusion, and somewhere.
I would like to see that.
I would like to see it too.
Good, so I'll be having a second.
Yeah, I would just send it to everybody.
Great.
Yeah. Um, that's all I have.
That's a lot of good stuff. Thank you. Uh, look, we already talked about affordable housing and P O C D, so unless there are any other, you did not finish.
It wasn't part of this, it's kind of separate. Something, I, I attended a workshop in the Council of Small Towns, and there was a gentleman there who runs this, called Power Plant slash recycling facility called Quantum Vital Power. And I thought it was a very interesting thing, because it's got, it's like a net zero energy user and produces zero waste, rather produces mulch and takes your wet food waste and converts it into, you know, one mulch or two natural gas, and you sell off the natural gas. So it, it sounds like it's something that this company would, would first run and branch for. And I was thinking, like, that would be really, other than it's a cool facility, but something like that here in Southeastern Connecticut to help address the waste management issue? We're not aware, we have a waste management department in Connecticut. So trying to address that, I think it's a kind of interesting facility, but likely something worth bringing to Southeastern Connecticut, whether it's in this town or, I don't know, J S one, obviously with the shipping costs of bringing the materials there, but it is working and they are generating electricity. So, or, I'm sorry, natural gas and producing mulch, which they also sell and store. So it's something I'm going to look into, and see if we can't, see what's involved with that. Maybe there is a spot that in, in town that that could go. So when you think about agricultural uses, I kind of put it in that regard, in that it, it's producing this biomass, kind of like a farm. This is biomass, you know, formalized, so. It's something I'll just have a look at, and I'll, you know, whatever that goes.
Fantastic, great.
So definitely think the commission needs to be aware of the waste management issue. And I think a lot of that, in terms of recycling in Connecticut, starts in the household and education, and there's just not enough of it. If I stand corrected, when I realized the proper way to recycle, of recycling materials, I'm just jamming up the machine. Call this some guy on a bad day.
Wish cycling.
So, you know, all your plastic medicine bottles, those are not recycled. So, but they are. Styrofoam, which you want, that is just not recycled, it's on your household trash. So, just those things help in terms of reducing the cost, because the cost of the municipality is based on tipping fees, which is waste. Take out the wet wastes, out of food, out of the waste room, you reduce your tipping fees right there. So, and then if you can properly recycle, we'll reduce any of that. But that takes a lot of public application education. And then, you know what's connected to it, is power, to, to purpose of, of it's better. I'll get that.
On that high note.
Bio power.
That part was the high note.
It will obviously replace, you know, the, the, the amount of energy that's created for a rain truck.
Yeah.
It starts with that.
Fantastic. No new business, so if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn? Can entertain that now?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Nicole. Anyone?
Second.
Thank you, Rich, all right. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Thank you.